When we're dealing with our public safety dispatch. And so that is about $26,000. And I believe that the chief is looking for other ways that we can install this. I think she applied for a grant maybe through State 911 so that instead of renting space from a private space, I think it was, who was it on the Hill? Who did we get the water? There's land.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't remember, but the chief is working with the rec center in 911 to find another location that we can install this radio equipment. But because it's in Chopsfield, we have to pay for the equipment. So that's what this is on here for. And that was on the original capital list. I just did not get as much information about it because I knew that it was particularly related to safety and I thought that it.
They would've put it on Robbie's tower, don't they?
Yeah, but I think that they're trying to find another way that they don't have to.
Well, we got a tower. I suggested this once before. We have a tower at the DPW facility.
That's what they're.
That's what I suggested.
Okay, yes.
They try to put it there.
Yes.
Then you don't have to pay Robbie for it.
Exactly. So we're trying to get money from State 911 to build a tower so that we can put this equipment onto that tower when we get the money to build it at the police, at the station, at the DPW.
Do you know that we pay Robbie for that?
I don't know that.
I would be careful. I don't think.
He collects money from everybody else, so.
Yeah, but one of the typical issues offers when they put a tower in is to support local... Just be careful. I don't, I don't know the answer, but it's often, because I know when we try to do a tower or whatever, they would, they would support municipal communications on that tower. So just, yeah, okay.
Kelly, is this equipment an upgrade to existing or is this new?
I believe it's new. But it's because the outdated technology that we currently have is basically outdated and it's not sufficient to.
So then if it's outdated, this is a replacement?
Yeah, I think it's to supplement what we already have. Like Police Department bought similar equipment a couple of years ago. And we need to, I believe we need to supplement that with this equipment as well because we're not getting complete uninterrupted coverage.
Is it in the vehicles or in the station?
No, it's on, it's on the tower. It's in the on whatever tower is going to exist.
For them to communicate at the station or out on the trucks? Both, every day?
And with the rec center, it's going to be part of it too.
Yeah, which is part of, which, which part of this is the rec center requirement?
So the equipment is us. The rec center will be helping to build a, to, to build the structure.
In the, oh.
On the DPW building is what we're trying to get. Rather than going on private land and having to pay for private access and rental of private land or private property. We're trying to figure out if we can build a tower up at the DPW instead.
If they'll build us a tower, if we put our equipment on it.
Yes.
Put our equipment on it anyway.
Yes.
There's some advantages of control.
Right.
In doing that.
Right. The MIA credits.
Yeah.
What can they be used for?
Well, in this case, they're basically excess appropriations based on what was budgeted last year and what we actually have to pay. So we budgeted a certain number based on what they tell us the estimated cost will be. And at that point in time, we have no idea what they're going to announce at the January session for participation credits. We don't know how many classes we'll take so that we can get a discount on some of our premiums. So throughout the year, we're, we're trying to, you know, taper down. We're trying to bring down the cost of our premiums. So from the time that we budget a town meeting until the time that we're paying the bill and we know what's left, there's a gap there. So that's an excess appropriation.
Typically referred to as tailings.
As tailings.
Okay, but that seems very different to me than participation credits from MIA. That sounds like an account where we can use funds for things that identify these kind of categories or these kind of items?
It's, it's more of a linguistic thing. I just wanted to find a way a few years back to make a connection between some of the capital items that weren't getting funded and being able to use money that was appropriated by town meeting for insurance. And rather than have that just sit around for an extra year and then turn into free cash, then we could utilize the money from those for risk management and risk mitigation purchases.
Okay, so this isn't something held by MIA as a credit?
No, no.
This is money that we conservatively budgeted and didn't need.
Money that we didn't spend.
So this is just in our general fund?
It's a, it's a transfer.
And the reason we didn't use it is because we got credits.
Because we're.
Because we got credits. It lowered the amount we had to spend below what we'd appropriated. So what, the amount represents what has been received in MIA credits, but it's not a check they give. It's just money that we expected to spend.
And we haven't.
And haven't had to.
So it's just in our general fund?
But the source is the, the participation credits.
It's budgeted now for insurance and what we'll do is a transfer is we'll say we're going to take it from the insurance line and we're going to put it to say pay either, you know, either to the fire department or to, yeah. So in this case, we, it would just be go to other.
Okay.
And typically there are items that, typically there are items that you can use at the, that you can purchase at the end of the year so that it also allows us to use it in this fiscal year, something that you can purchase and buy before, you know, because once town meeting is over, we can utilize that money now to purchase it, buy it, get it in and, and close that account out before the end of the fiscal year.
That's very different in my mind, that this is just money sitting in the general fund. Than something that was being held by MIA credits for us to use for certain things. So this could, this is for anything.
Totally different.
Yes.
Yeah, this is just money that could be used for anything that's being presented to us.
Yes, exactly.
It's just, yeah, exactly.
And we're choosing to apply it to these three, but it could be other technology requirements.
Right.
Like from the schools.
What this doesn't, what this doesn't say, and should be in whatever the final thing is, is there's going to be an insurance account that we spent less in, so we're going to take some of that money we saved due to having received participation credits that we lost. There might be another account into which we will transfer. So this doesn't say which accounts they're coming from.
Not yet, the next version.
Well, it will because you're going to put in the budget line item number there.
Yeah, it's just that now that opens it up in my mind too. It doesn't have to be, it looked like these credits from MIA were geared just to safety-related things that are somehow tied in with insurance and you get your evaluated. This could go for anything. It could go for computers, it could go for trucks, it could go for anything. It's extra money in our fund.
This, this isn't to, this isn't to confuse things. It's only as an illustration that we have, this is sort of just a very first draft of a memo that I typically will do before we get to make any decisions. I mean, this one, I'll give this one to you after. So basically what we'll say is, okay, here's the memo for special town meeting transfers. I'll state where we're getting it, what it was for. And most years we'll use tailings from the health insurance to fund a snow and ice deficit if there is one. And so just traditionally, I've just been calling them the MIA Safety Fund Transfers only because it just attaches the word safety. But you're right, it doesn't have to be just for safety related. But this is just an example of the, of the template that I'll be pulling together to explain what all these things are, where they're coming from and what they're for. And then ultimately what the FINCOM needs to recommend for passage.
Is there some grand total reality that says this is the pool that we're, of money that's left over?
Well, what I'll, what I'll be doing with the accountant.
From all different places.
Yeah, from all the places. What the accountant is saying, okay, how much money do we have in the 111F safety premium line for our, for our insurance for that? What do we have left in the property liability insurance line? What do we have left in this line, in the, you know, so, or in the health, the medical expenses line? And then we'll have a list. And that's what they call the tailings. And that's typically what we would consider using for anything that sort of fell out of the bucket for town meeting. And in some cases, they've actually used some of the tailings to fund items that would traditionally be in annual town meeting warrant. So this is really kind of a, it's a little bit of a cleanup exercise as well.
When do we know that number for the tailings?
Well, we're working on that matter. So the, so the tricky part is that we don't know all the information before we're going to go to print and we can't make all those decisions before we go to print.
Which is why we're doing the more general.
I'm giving you a head, I'm giving you a, you know, just an upfront look at what we're pulling together now. So our work continues even once the warrant is being printed. We're, we're aligning, what do we have for excess capacity based on this year's budget? And where can we perhaps apply that? And then that would go through the normal process.
Okay, thanks.
One of the challenges in totaling this up is it might lead some to see that as, oh, where is that bucket of money? You know, where is that 150K or whatever? And the answer is it's in a lot of accounts that thanks to different mechanisms ended up being underspent. Now let's take what wasn't spent that we counted on spending and use it for things we need.
Yeah, I just don't know how much there is to work with here and.
Well, each one is separate.
Forward counter?
Each one is a separate game.
Which each one what?
It's the entire budget.
Each account?
Every single budget line potentially could have an asset.
Could have it, exactly.
So you know of these right now?
Yes.
There'll be others that are coming through, potentially?
I just know that these are things that were identified and listed somewhere and that is on the radar for FINCOM or for us. And they haven't been fully vetted yet because we weren't even sure if it was worth a conversation because we didn't know if funding was going to be available. If we had too many storms this year and we had to spend 200 grand on snow and ice, we might not have, be able to talk about any of these items.
We'd be doing fund transfers directly into that kind of stuff instead. The key on this is that the, what was I going to say? I forget.
Okay, one other, one, one.
It's going to be brilliant, I know.
Well, one point is that if you, if you were to leave this there, if you were to leave this as is, it would eventually come free cash. What I was realizing though is that if we turn out gear now, then why should we have to wait two years to use, apply free cash when we have the money sitting there now and we just need to authorize?
This is a mechanism for taking, just take the MIA participation credits. A mechanism for using money that we didn't spend in this fiscal year as opposed to putting it in a situation where it has to go to free cash, wait till it's certified. We get it, but we get it in here.
And, and the other tie-in too that I thought was helpful was the fact that a lot of the things that we called the MIA Safety Fund, that's what I've been calling it. But the idea was that rather than spend money on insurance premium, let's spend money on things that will alleviate or mitigate our risk ahead of time. So rather than have our firefighters go in with outdated equipment, let's use the money we have available now to make sure that they're as safe as possible with updated equipment, let's use the money that's safety related to purchase that now rather than wait two years and apply it after. That was the connection that I was trying to.
Is there anything left on the capital list that we were initially reviewing that isn't covered by this?
You know, what I did is, oh, one thing that isn't on here. I suggested, or it didn't make it on here, replacement of the telecommunications systems for the town and library. I did take that off, but what I would be suggesting is that we would need to maybe allocate maybe $3,000 or so if that, I need to get a price. That rather than replace the systems now because I don't have, we couldn't get any RFPs in time, rather than leave that on for now, that we would push that for discussion next year, but then take some tailings to fix what we know is broken with the current system. Meaning, right now if we have an issue, we have to spend $75 an hour for any issue. What I was suggesting is if we're going to have to make it, make it work for the next year, that we would allocate a small amount of money and have them come in and deal with everything all at once so that we can make it through another year with the system as is. So there's two things, there's one thing that might change on here under department transfers. There may be an item on there that says transfer this 2,000 or 2,500 dollars from this line and put it into Board of Selectment Special. And the, and the reason would be for professional services to update the home system, message system or whatever, to troubleshoot.
For a library and?
Wherever, yeah.
Okay.
One question on the domain servers. Those three V four, we had priced at 8,000 a piece for 24,000? Is there more?
No, 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 no. It was, we were doing two at 12,000 and we were going to separate them.
Two at 12?
No, it was, they were 12,000 each before we said 24 based on buying two. But then we realized that to buy two and to spend money on installation was really silly that we should be buying all three at the same time. So three at 12,000 equals the 36,000.
And it is here.
Which is here. Oh, 12, 12, 12. Yes, that's the wrong number. That's a typo. Should be 36 because I believe it's 12,000 each.
Or there might've been some discount when you grouped the three together as you said earlier, I think in the description.
I have an actual cost estimate.
The technology consulting, you know, it brought it down.
I, I have the actual estimates. I'll check the numbers, but I think this is a typo. I think it was supposed to be 36,000 total based on the purchase of three servers all at the same time so they could all be installed, purchased and installed before the end of the year, get those in place. And then come July 1 when we get the allocation for the workstations, that then everything from service side will be all set. And then you could sort of phase to the next workstation and order all that equipment and then the installation. So the only other, so what's on here as well is the floor scrubber for the 14 and then the document management maps and plan storage. I think I had sort of whittled this down a little bit. There was probably something else on there. To me, if the money for, if the funding is available, I think that we need to continue to build on our success and the momentum that we've already created with our centralized document management system downstairs. There's a huge section of the basement that has like maps and plans and it's just not organized. So what I was suggesting is that rather than just push that off till next year when we have a boatload of other expenses, that if funding does permit this year, that if we could at least tackle map, plan, storage, that would incorporate the actual equipment that we have to buy, plus I think it's about $6,000 for the labor to actually inventory and categorize all of the maps and plans. So that amount I left on there, but that would be something to talk about.
And there is a boxcar full of them.
So 6,000 for labor and the remainders for what?
Equipment.
Drawers?
The metal.
Bins to store them.
Yeah. We have the quote, so.
Why don't we kind of move into electronics so to speak so that we don't have to?
Legally required to keep.
We're not going to throw it away.
Yeah.
Not going to throw it away. But if, if things are electronic and we can't get it all electronic because some of the stuff's so old and you're not going to electronic. But if we can get the bulk of it in the future somehow electronic, then the storage of it doesn't have to be in any fancy drawers or anything like that. It'll take you a week maybe to find something, but hopefully you never have to go at it unless somebody from the state says, show me where it is. And I'll, I'll prove I haven't thrown it out. But I think if anything, in other words, what we're asking for at a distance here then would be 21,000 of cabinets. That's a lot of money to be throwing into cabinets in the basement, it seems to me.
There is a, from the labor perspective, the first step in going to that electronic, you know, data system that we were talking about, which we're going to be bringing up probably next Monday, the laser fiche. The first step is doing what Kelly said, not necessarily the equipment for it, but the pulling together of records, multiple records to ensure that you have them ready to scan quickly, no duplicates, they're in the order that you need. So there is a manual labor process to get them ready to scan them into the electronic system.
And we're going to go out to consultant to do that labor work.
Yeah, yes. Just like we did with the consolidated records for misuse. You need to organize what you have so you're not spending lines.
And the labor is the large part of it.
So is it appropriate, instead of asking for 27,000, to ask for 6,000 for the labor? I mean, I understand.
But what do you do with them when you organize them?
We stack them up.
Yeah.
Until you get them into the electronic format, you do need access to them and you need it in a way that's understandable.
There are very few of them that you, that you need access. Is this going in?
It has to be stored in some of this.
We just spent money to do the files for Board of Health and CONSCOM and buildings. And they have, they have plans in them. It's not going to touch those plans, correct?
I believe so. This is the, the new.
It will or won't?
Well, we, we filed the file cabinets, but there's still all the maps and plans that still need to be inventoried and.
Maps and plans are not necessarily in these files that you're.
No, they're not.
Because there are. For example, in Board of Health, half of the folders have the septic system plans. Okay, so those, those are plans. Are we talking about those plans in this?
Yes.
We are. Then why don't?
Whatever is sitting downstairs.
So that work is done. You don't have, there's no labor associated with that if we've already indexed.
Some of these, these, most of these drawings down there that she's talking about are half of the size of this table.
Like A-size drawings?
They've got to be stored somewhere.
Some of them in the, in the folder that I'm talking about are the size too. They follow them up and they put them in. These are.
And a lot of those maps too, nobody is scanning and storing because they said that's not how people want to access them. So they're actually keeping the maps in the paper form.
And.
But I don't know what portion of this.
Law requires that we keep is the majority of them, so we can't just turn them electronic and throw them away.
We're not trying to throw them away.
I agree with that. And it takes years to get them scanned in budget-wise because it's expensive to do the scanning.
I was going to say we spend a lot, $21,000 scanning them. But the other thing too is that if we're going to meet requirements for storage, it's going to have to be in the appropriately environmentally controlled space with an element of security and so on. I bet we'd spend a third to two-thirds just getting metal boxes that met those needs for all those demands anyway, so.
Would it be adding more of the cabinets, so the type of cabinets that's downstairs that roll and make them dense?
Um, it's, it's just a different setup. They would be high density. Maybe they'll go up and down, but they're all like long tubes.
Okay, so you're saving a lot of space as well?
Yes, yes.
Because it's consolidated.
Their roll is opposed to hung?
They're, yes, because the ones that we have now are, are meant for like standard file folders, but we would get them custom, they're for maps, so they're, they're a lot deeper, but they're made for, you just roll them and you put in the.
So the, the plans be rolled?
The plans.
Well, that's interesting. I've seen a lot that are hung.
Most of them are rolled.
Yeah. Down there, okay. It takes a lot of space because all that's.
Because I don't know that better.
But if, if they're built so that they go up to the ceiling as opposed to just at truck level?
No, I'm not disagreeing. It's just having worked in an engineering company that kept 75 years of drawings and so on, and they were all hung. It's a clip system, they don't hang. You go through like you're looking at fabric samples.
In the store.
Yeah. King's Information System was the one that gave us one of our original quotes. And then from there we started knowing what we were asking for, getting quotes and then getting the pricing, but they all pretty much were the same.
They don't know what the technology is.
Yeah.
Is there, and I don't want to jump into the school discussion that we're going to have tomorrow, but are there any school requirements that possibly could be benefiting from these tailings?
Yes, that's, that's really what the FINCOM will ask us after we get the warrant settled and printed, which is, okay, is there a source for say, you know, there's something? Yeah, well, that's in here.
Representing now.
But just to play devil's advocate, instead of doing the mapping, could that be computers for the school?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that could be part of our discussion about what we could get the school. Immediately this money is in the general fund.
Mm-hmm. It could buy technology with some other tailings. So the offset of this, so the other side of this though is that everything you use from here, you don't want to deplete it completely because then you're really tapping into next year's free cash number, so.
Yeah, not depleted, but we're making choices.
It does.
Which one gets the tailings, so.
Yeah, and you want to make sure it's for things that you can purchase in this fiscal year because if it's part of a budget transfer, you need to spend it in FY19 versus have it carryover year after year like you would with a normal warrant article.
This is part of the standard FINCOM process. There's a communication between the financial, panel financial team anticipating a number of tailings and it's, it's integrated into the FINCOM budget process.
All right.
Yeah, because.
Just as a follow-up.
Ask them to do something different or whatever, but it's not like, it's just, it's in the F1 process and that.
Okay.
I just, all the town departments we're getting addressed here, I just wanted to see how if at all some of the school concerns could be addressed as well. But it sounds like it's already in the works.
Could be. Well, there is, there is that one that is in here for this.
Or the scrubber.
Yeah, well, that's been on, well, that's been on the list.
So do we have, so that's the STM or the?
Yes, I just have one, we'll have one warrant article.
Okay, go.
Can I go back to the, it's still on this table though, if I may?
Hold on, I'm sorry, with the chair.
On what table?
On the table, okay. So as you just said, these are for things that I'm going to spend this year. I'm only worried about the first two there, the training, because you indicated the training might go into September next year.
No, 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 no. We want to, we, the CAT system will be online before then they want to get it fully implemented by September, which means that between now and the end of this fiscal year, we're getting the CAT system. It's got to be in place and we need the training this fiscal year.
And we can do all the training by June 30?
Yes.
Or we, or we could put, the point is we can easily put it in a separate article within the STM if we're concerned about whether that training may extend into July. And that's, that's a question to have.
Yeah, no, no, I would be checking that just to be sure.
So, so is it going to go on 3rd or are we thinking about a separate warrant article?
No, I, I think that it's going to be completed before July 1st.
Can we check that?
That's why it's here. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Kelly, you have one more article?
So I just wanted to make note, I just got a $93 bill dated 10/31/17. So our article balance?
Two.
Article two and a special town will be actually increased by $93 and there'll be two vendors. And that's.
Truly. From 1917 or 2017?
That's what it says.
From who?
October of 17.
Water Chemicals.
Water Chemical. And it's the.
Great, had it all folded up, keeping his chair from.
As far as I'm concerned, they own it.
It's for the library.
Was it the library?
Yeah.
They own it.
Well.
Two and a half years behind on billing.
Right.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Anyway.
Can I ask you one thing about the police chief search or are you going to go through that one?
You're going to go through these others?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, two and a half years.
It's just the wording where it says to conduct a police chief's search.
If you have any suggested changes.
Oh, it's just the word center. I'm not sure if I'm understanding it right. To conduct a police chief's search process and professional assessment center?[1507.53]
Yes, that's what they refer to it as, a recommended assessment center.
Oh, they conduct. Oh, a consensus, okay. And then that same sentence, and I guess the center is fine. It's like, recommended at the town vote, blah, 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 of a consultant to conduct police chief search process and professional assessment center town of top.
For the town of top sales.
For them.
Yeah.
There's actually some practical activities they have to do.
Yeah, I was involved in one, actually.
Were you?
Yeah, for Chief Ed.
Oh, good point.
So, you know.
Just a word center that you're in.
Moving right along.
Okay.
STM, anything else?
Well, just the attachments are just sneak peeks to any particular articles that we may need in that we just talked about. The employee compensation study, that was something they distributed. We haven't had a discussion about that. And then, um, the police chief search, and then the servers. I left, so the question that I had really, I mean, I moved the servers from the annual town meeting warrant over to special town meeting warrant. And I just left this here because I just wanted to make sure that we were consistent. In the past, when we do a transfer during special town meeting, we don't necessarily call them out as a special warrant article unless it's something that you need to buy, you need to cross over fiscal year for. However, with the purchase of the servers, we can do that in one year. So we don't need a warrant article. We could easily just do a transfer within the budget process. So I left this here, but before I took it off, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. It, I don't believe, it does not need a separate warrant article. But I just wanted to make sure that people, you know, how you felt about not explaining it as a separate warrant article, when it could just as easily be incorporated into the budget transfers under Article second in the special town meeting warrant.
I'll tell you why I like it in the transfers. Because it's not so much asking to spend extra money. I think the message is that we're taking advantage of an ability to use money we didn't spend and had been previously authorized in order to fill this other need. When it sits as a separate article, I think the thinking tends to go more to the idea, oh, we're gonna spend this money extra? And it, it's a subtle difference, but I think if we can do it under the transfers and get a recommendation from the FinCom that that makes sense to them too, then I would tend to think that was preferable.
It also limits the space on our warrant as well, so we don't have to.
Nothing, but the special time meeting warrant comes early. And my experience is, it's just like, you know, folks kinda fly through it because they're waiting for that big one that comes up afterwards. And so keeping it small, I think is a benefit. Otherwise, we end up with that special time meeting warrant that's as long as the very one.
So that's the only reason that's on there.
That he might.
I don't have any problem with that. If we've got the money, it's already been appropriated and this year hasn't been used.
So with regard to the other two articles, we haven't had a discussion, but if we are going to add those to the warrant, whether or not the FinCom has a specific recommendation, you could always write recommendation pending further approval. So, but we'll need to make a decision on that. If not tomorrow, then by Monday's meeting, so that I can pull them into the warrant and number everything appropriately.
You're talking about this fourth and fifth that's in ready?
Yes, for employee compensation study and the police chief, police chief search process and assessment center. One other thing I'd like to do with that police chief assessment center is touch base with MRI just to make sure this number is the right number, because it's been a while since we've done it. And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, ten thousand is the right number. But anyway, those are the two articles. We're gonna have to decide on those. If not, you know, we can maybe think about it tonight. It could even be discussed tomorrow, but definitely by Monday, we need to make a decision for the final special town meeting warrant if these are gonna do warrant articles included on there.
How strong is your argument about doing the employee compensations?
Honestly, I just, I'd rather have a consultant come in and tell us if we're right on par or if we're under, we're over. I mean, the suspicion is that we're over because we've done a great job with our employee compensation structure that we voted five years ago. Typically, every five years, you would wanna look at that, you wanna look at your comps. And rather than have this sort of floating idea out there that, you know, we're overpaying people, I'd rather just have a professional come in and be able to work with us to look at the old model, see if it needs some tweaks, see if we need to update that, bring that before the board and say, okay, well before we're in the heat of the budget time, let's look at our salaries, see how we measure up, and then make adjustments long before we're sitting here trying to figure out the warrant. Because it just seems that every year, there's a common theme at the very end when it's too close to really talk about it.
So you feel it's pretty strong in there?
I do. I think it's the right thing to do.
I think it's short money to answer the question a lot of people have. Second thing is, we made significant investment in adjusting salaries based upon the initial money. And I think this is sort of quality control to follow up.
No arguing, I agree.
The other thing I feel is important on that.
Not a lot of money, for sure.
There's not a lot of money, and a lot of it comes down to knowing that you are appropriately competitive. You don't wanna be paying more than the next town, but you can't afford to pay much less or you won't get the people. So we wanna be sure that it'll inform everything from collective bargaining on down.
I like that it's, we wanna be fair to the employees, but there may be some creative ways of working with that pay grid that are reflective of what some other towns are doing that we might not have thought of.
I already know that there's a few recommendations that I make. It's just in this position, as town administrator and personnel director, you know, it's not really fair for me to be making those judgments without outside this, you know, you know, somebody who specifically deals with these kind of issues to make sure that I'm not off base. And we've had a good experience with them before. And I think it's really looking back at what we've done, making sure we're still on target and making adjustments if.
This is leveraging pretty high proportion, not school size, but pretty high proportion of our budget. And to have that be on target and defensible for the action that we are continuing to take, I think should be a comfort to residents or citizens. So I would tend to support that.
Okay. In the case of the employee compensation and the domain service, I think we should shorten the explanations up considerably, somewhat in keeping with John's thought of, don't make it too complex. They're trying to make it through here fast. So I will take it to try to shorten it down.
If you're gonna get rid of compensation, it's about pretty simply.
Yeah, right.
And the search process.
Just for those two, I think it's a little bit more, you know, a little bit, a little bit.
Are we saying we did wanna keep the domain service on here or just put it in the transfer area so we don't need that whole discussion?
I heard we're not going to.
Oh, so we don't actually.
Yeah, I don't even have to.
Thank you, don't even have to, thank you.
But no, I agree with you, I need to cut this down. But I didn't wanna spend any more time.
You gotta work on it, okay.
Yeah, I didn't wanna spend any more time on it.
We've got no question about the police chief search prices, do we?
No, the only question is the right target number.
Dick, did you wanna take a stab at this with Kelly speaking during the end of things?
Do I wanna do which?
Shrinking the employee compensation.
Stab on our. Kelly said she was gonna do it.
Well, you can do it. I have plenty of other stuff to keep me busy.
Why don't you take a stab in that way?
Yeah, I have no charge of charging, okay.
We'll get to that another time.
Just cut down whatever I have there and we can move on and get that into. In my hearing though, are we at a point, did I just hear that maybe I should just do a special town meeting warrant with these two articles? Rather than leave it hanging out there? Because I know we have a lot of things that still are unanswered.
Well, I think that's.
I think that's your consensus.
Yeah, I would do that.
It's easier to pull them out and do that.
It sounds like we have a consensus.
Let people see that we're doing it and we can't.
Well, I'll get to that one.
I understand, but I think having it there as we think it should be part of it, we'll have the conversation in public and if we decide on that basis.
Okay, with that being said, what's your preference for ordering? Should I put the water first and then these articles? Or do I put those in the middle? It's more of a question of what you think is gonna get us enough traction. You know, if somebody's gonna. I don't, it's more of a process question.
I think revoking, rescinding, things like that tend to be, how can I say? Not so much the meat. And therefore, I would, I like the order you have them as written in red. Which is, these two here would be fourth and fifth, and then to sixth is sixth here. And it was keep these, keep these numbers the same. Search these two in here as you have.
Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, I would use these numbers that you have in red.
That was my initial thought, was anger those things, the three other things that are quite the.
I agree.
Okay.
STM, all right. Moving for a minute towards what we need for tomorrow. I wanna confirm with Kelly, there's two things that we absolutely know we can't do it. One, I know is done, but I just wanna make sure that it's at our fingertips, that. Did a really nice job of putting together the specimen or the sample override questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to have those for tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, the way I.
Just so we can work with it.
Okay.
I thought the way you did was right.
The way you got them, we'll massage it.
Okay.
And with complete respect for our wonderful computers, I need those in paper. Just, I'll work on this time for you.
And, but other than.
I know it works.
Also.
Dixon, you have your paper.
The second thing, Catherine and I talked about this right at the edge of the FinCom table, and she said she was able to do it, but I haven't seen.
Oh, why are you having it for you?
It was, oh, for today, yes, that's what she said.
Why don't you give it? Tax recap, I don't have copies yet, but I can make them.
Let me just say what I need, I don't know what the reassessment, what she did, or something that needs to be done tomorrow. We need the components of the elementary school budget asked, for lack of a better word. And we talked about being in, I wanna say columns, I don't, that's what I have literally, but three components. One, are those things that the FinCom is likely to recommend? They were kind enough to tolerate me pushing them for a sense of their committee. Jumping the one to the far right then would be the total over a million, a million fifty-three thousand request. And then the middle, are those things in between? So that we can.
Now, let me see if I didn't understand.
I wish I didn't understand myself, but I did understand the last one.
You just work backwards.
I want, yeah, I want the components. So, so, like I said, on the phase one, the subject to their formal votes, the FinCom was inclined to support an override of at least four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. There were some FinCom members who would go up to six hundred. The elementary schools want, or at least as of that point in time, were requesting, if I have the figure right, a million fifty-three thousand, eight fifty-three. I don't care for a round of coffee.
Do you know what's included in that number?
That's what I'm trying to get. That's what.
So you want. And that's the banding though. We do have that document, right?
Yeah, but I don't wanna be playing with that at our meeting tomorrow.
That's it, yep. Good.
So there's three pieces to the jigsaw puzzle is what they recommend is what the elementary's want. And I know I'm not enunciating it perfectly, but it's kinda like what the bridge is, you know, what's left.
Is that just for the operating budget?
No.
It's for everything, operating.
It's the operating budget, there's the security system, which I know we have sort of in there.
One time versus recurring.
They have a tech request.
Three to nine.
Yep. So at the least, the most important thing is that there isn't anything that's not on the sheet that we're gonna work from.
Tell me that sheet that you wrote your notes on right there? Are you thinking about doing that just in a different format? Because you mentioned columns.
It needs to be more simplistic. I mean, we can talk, we don't have to wait there, but, but we can talk for five minutes afterwards and figure out the format. But the point is, the entire universe of what we're considering is enunciated by the schools.
Yeah.
The FinCom is willing to support a portion of that. Then there's what's left, maybe it's.
Okay, I think, no, I think I. I think I can pull this together.
But it's gotta be highlighted, so it is operating. And there's, he agreed we did do, I don't think they necessarily listened to him, but he did do the priority, and this gets complicated.
Yeah, I know.
Because sometimes I read it down, sometimes you're, this won't work for tomorrow.
No, you have to. I think I know what we have.
But if we don't have that, we won't be able to.
No, I already started it.
So the total would be up around one point five million is what is being broken down?
With the other stuff.
With the other stuff in it.
So it'll be kind of base, we're not arguing about it. This would be kind of override, willing to support. This is also what was asked for, but at this point, does not have override support.
You know what I kept thinking about was when you go and you're looking at a restaurant or you're buying a piece of equipment or hardware, and they show you like all the features of one and they, you know what I mean, like.
They're like in Little Business.
This one's the highest cost, but it includes all of these things. And then this one includes this much or that.
Yeah, I'll take the sports package with the car tires.
You're gonna take extra for that.
Everything in the silver package.
Oh, they find a kindergarten.
Is everything in the gold package?
Just to summarize, because you throw our number and clarify to me. I know, I know of three number requests from the school committee. One million fifty thousand.
Okay.
Three hundred and ninety-one thousand.
That's good. The first was.
A hundred and seventy thousand.
That's the safety. The safety, the security.
Safe, that's the three things that you said, but those are the dollars.
Gotta make sure, we just have to make sure there isn't anything else floating around. Well, they've got, see, it's like, depends how you look at it. So, for example, for example, one of the very hot topics, well, I go a bit phrases, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars for a five-day kindergarten without tuition.
Oh, and that's, this is breaking down the one.
Breaking down the one.
Yes, yes, yes.
Breaking down the million dollar.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna do teacher by teacher.
No, 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 we're not doing it now. I just wanna get the gross.
I mean, try to, I mean, try to.
She said like a one point five.
I'd like to have a list of things that are included in the one point.
Yes.
I'd like to have a list of things that are included in this four hundred and sixty.
Right, except that I can tell you, having lived with this, well, you don't want the real, real detail because the processes be one. So like, for example, the best example is the four sixty-eight, seven twenty-one, eighty number was the FinCom's definition of level services. Yeah.
Yeah.
So you don't wanna know, it's one more fourth grade teacher, it's one more crossing guard. You just don't, it's just passed, and I would respectfully suggest. But, but that's the level.
Yeah.
But if you take a one point five and take this out, what's left? And we ought to have a list of that, but it's.
But if I can, if you allow, category by category, not individual item by, we can always go to detail.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Three words, three words.
Three words, line item, that's it.
So in that regard, because it would take time to do. I would be interested in understanding from anybody, but especially, I think, from KP, if there were a way in which we could, the town could, at a town meeting, appropriate a certain amount of money for Title One that would be outside the budget, but would be available to us to apply to the budget if they don't get Title One. If they get Title One, then there's no reason to do it. So I'm looking for a mechanism where we might have a warrant article that the town approves that would be something in the order of a hundred and twenty-five thousand available for the board of selectmen, together with the school, doesn't have to be the school committee, this school committee, to agree that they didn't get it, or they only got part of it, and that we could transfer money out of it. So what my request is, in order to have an answer for tomorrow, is could we perhaps go to KP and ask them if they have some thoughts about mechanisms to do just that?
Well, that's, right, because I think that's what this, no, okay, it's a different purpose. The spend reserve could do that if you're talking specifically about special ed.
That's why, the concept of it is there, but this is different, and it.
Maybe this is a fair, it might be a second.
What's that?
Same on the title.
Is it okay to do?
I don't know.
Yeah, no, 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 to ask KP, all right? Then we'll have an answer for tomorrow. That would be great.[1657.62]